All right, we're good. Wow, it's so quiet in here, I can't believe it. We will call to order the April 29, 2021 business meeting. County Administrator Gary Schmidt, please call the roll.
Thank you Chair Smith. First staff support today, Christina Twiliger, Clerk to the Board, Stephen Madcor, County Counsel, roll call on Zoom, Commissioner Schrader. In the hearing room, Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Schull.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. Uh, President, I will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty for justice for all.
We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us on the Zoom app for the meeting and you are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. With that in mind, I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Orders will be enforced during this business meeting. When you have those testifying, we have this wonderful brochure called Public Testimony before the Board of County Commissioners. You can pick that up outside and on the Zoom app. It should be available, correct? Christina, thank you very much. Gary, can you please introduce the first item?
Yes Chair Smith. First is wildfire update. Nancy Bush, Director of Disaster Management, will present. Go ahead, please.
All right, thank you and good morning, everyone. So for the wildland fire, we continue to have properties that are being cleaned up. As in fact, I will go out tomorrow to take a look at some of the properties that have been done by the ODOT contractors, and we'll let the Board know how that's going. Our Wildland Fire Recovery Assistance Group has also been very active in pulling things together, so I just wanted to talk about that a little bit. So the Clackamas County Long Term Recovery Group is a group of volunteer community members and nonprofit organizations who are ready and willing to help our, to help. Our mission is to assist anyone impacted or displaced by the 2020 wildfires, navigate the systems and processes on the road to rebuilding. So the types of assistance that they are now available and are including is organizing documents needed for applicants and claims, navigating insurance claims, FEMA applications and appeals, understanding rights associated with insurance, completing small business administration disaster loan applications, identifying other state and local financial resources, records recovery, including ID, vehicle title, social security card, and other vital records that may have been lost in the fires, and working through the cleanup process as well. So if anyone would like to contact our Long Term Recovery Group for the wildland fires, you can call 541-345-7106 at extension 2055, or you can email. Email, it's mccole, M-I-C-O-L-E dot olivias, O-L-I-V-A-S, at D as in dog, E-V-N-W dot org. So that organization is doing great work with our communities, and we just wanted to highlight that today with our wildland fire update.
Thank you. I've noticed that on Highway 213 that connects to I-205, ODOT has been taking down those trees and really clearing a wide swath of right away. It looks great, by the way.
Yeah, they're doing good work.
You can actually see more trees since more trees are cut, and it kind of looks like a park now. Before it was just a brushy mess. But yeah, I kind of, I'm liking some of this stuff that's being done, Nancy.
Yeah, they're doing good work.
Okay, next, are you done? Are you finished Nancy?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is COVID-19 updates. Nancy will present along with Philip Mason-Joyner, the county's Public Health Director. Go ahead, please.
All right, thank you. So we have our slides up there. Can I have the next slide, please? So we have our county metrics. We are expecting to go into extreme risk tomorrow. Our case per 100,000 is 244.7, and our percent of test positivity is 6.7 at this point. Next slide, please. The hospital bed metric was, is also met, which we had to meet what I just mentioned as well as these hospital metrics. The hospital metrics are statewide. They're not just for Clackamas County, they are statewide. We now have 319, which is the daily peak that we're looking at, and if that went over 300, that metric was met. And the percent change from last week is 37.4%, and they want that to be 15% or less. So we have met all the metrics for the extreme risk. Next slide, please. Our case count this past week was 569. As you can see, we're still climbing, not as steeply as we have been in the few weeks in the past, but we definitely had an incline over this past week. Next slide, please. Clackamas County is at 16,201 total cases, which is up 644 cases from last week. We now have 207 deaths, which is up for three deaths. Multnomah County is 36, 388 total cases. They are up 1,078 cases from last week, and they have four additional deaths. Washington County is at 24,371, at total deaths of 229. They are up 667 cases with zero deaths from last week. Next slide, please. Our statewide COVID patients, you'll see there, it is now at 328, and that is positive patients in organ hospitals statewide. That does continue to climb, and Philip is going to continue to talk about our hospitalizations and some of the numbers related to that, and answering some questions that Commissioner Schull had this past week.
Thank you Nancy, and good morning Chair Smith and Commissioners. Yes, the next slide, we, we do have specifically, this is hospitalizations in Clackamas County the past four months since the start of this calendar year. How many Clackamas County residents have been hospitalized who are COVID-positive? And then on the right-hand side here is the medium age. So this answers a little bit of Commissioner Schull's question from earlier this week. It does show that, on average, the age is dropping, which we would anticipate as older adults have had longer opportunity to get vaccinated. We are seeing, though, this month, the average age of those hospitalized is 57. And then the next slide, it just showed the breakdown each month, January, February, March, and April. You can see in yellow, that's 80-year-olds and older, in green, 70-year-olds, and so on. So we are starting to see this. We'll continue to monitor this. We're able to pull it out of our, the state's data system and can share this, if this is helpful and valuable to monitor over time in terms of what we're seeing locally for Clackamas County residents specifically in our local hospitals. Next slide, please Christina. I did want to provide an update on contact tracing. With this surge in cases, it is proving to be quite challenging to keep up with calling all the folks and doing robust interviews. The Oregon Health Authority does have a surge protocol, which counties can implement if they exceed their capacity. So when we look back about a month ago in mid-March, we had 194 cases. We were able to do full comprehensive interviews for 63 of those folks. 26% were not interviewed, and 2% refused. This past week, we had 569 cases. We had to implement the surge protocol, so only 27% had a full comprehensive interview done. A lot of them are very short to get the essential information of providing the education, letting them know that they have tested positive, identifying who they may have exposed so we can contact them, and trying our best to identify where they may have got, got the disease, so we can prevent outbreaks from happening. 71% last week, not interviewed. We, we have, we do still attempt multiple times, although not as aggressively, just because we have so many, so many individuals to call. So this is either folks not picking up their phone, or perhaps we have the wrong phone number, which is rare, but it does on occasion happen. It's, it's usually folks not answering, and we really do want to encourage the community to, when we call, it does say Clackamas County Public Health, please pick up the phone and participate in an interview. It'll protect you, provide you with the information you need. It'll help you protect other people. Very few people answer the phone and then refuse, so that is good, but the key is to answer the phone.
What was that last remark, Philip?
I'm sorry. Very few people, when we do get ahold of them, that they actually decline participating. It's usually people just not answering the phone.
That's good to know, yes.
Next slide, please. Vaccination, so very happy to see that we passed now just barely 40% of our population getting vaccinated. Very, very good news. We had a very busy weekend at Clackamas Town Center, over 8,000 folks vaccinated. We continue to have medium clinics in Malala, Camby, and Sandy. Our appointments in Clackamas County are still filled very, very quickly. We also have a waitlist. We are seeing some no-shows, which we try to fill in very quickly to get folks into slots. But across places in Oregon, there are counties that, because their smaller population, they're, they're not needing as many doses. So those doses are coming to the more populated area. We're also excited that Johnson &amp; Johnson pause has been lifted, so starting next week, we'll start to get more Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, which is a one-dose vaccine. So we are moving forward, all hands on deck, to continue to vaccinate the population. Next slide. I encourage folks to continue to check our website. We will be posting appointments as they come available. It's, it's a little challenging to share this information, what we, what we have planned next week, because we, we learn from the state how many allocations of doses we will get Thursday afternoon or Friday morning, and then we publish on our website what's available next week. So that's always been the timeline, a little bit challenging. I'd love to be able to share it here, so everybody knows what we have planned next week, but we have to make sure we have enough vaccines available to open up clinics. But we do have plans in place, and once we know how much vaccine we have, we, we push that information out. Folks can't, if you don't want to check the website or you're not able to, please call our call center during regular business hours, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, at 503-655-8224. We're hearing that we're very quickly able to get folks into local appointments. And then for those who are able to go into Portland, the Convention Center will be ramping down in early June. So that resource is a great resource. I've heard from a lot of folks that if you can drive to the Convention Center in Portland, it's efficient, it's fast, it's easy. That resource won't be here forever. It could be the fastest way for a lot of folks to get the vaccine. And for folks who are 16 and 17-year-old, that's where the majority of the Pfizer vaccines available. That's the only vaccine 16 and 17-year-olds at this point can get, so that is a great resource for our younger, younger folks to get the vaccine. You can go to getvaccinated.org.gov. That's where you want to pre-register. I'm hearing from folks that when you sign up and register, you actually, right now, there are appointments all of May available at the Convention Center. You can get an appointment very quickly now. And I think I'll hand the last slide to Nancy to talk a little bit about some of the work we're doing to outreach to businesses and support them during this tough time.
All right, thank you Philip. So yes, we've done a lot of outreach to our local businesses regarding going into extreme. We have contacted our restaurants, gyms, and pools through our environmental health staff, because they actually have emails to each of them because they license them, so that is a really good contact there. The Chamber of Commerce and business organizations, we've been working BCS to get the information out through those avenues. And of course, we're putting everything on our social media posts this week and next week, and our business recovery centers will remain open, and we also have the information there and some additional information where they may want to receive some assistance at the, the business recovery centers as well. And you can find the business recovery centers on our website at clackamas.us backslash DM, and then go to our COVID page. And that is what we have for today, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from Commissioners for our presenters?
Yeah, I have one.
Paul, you're up.
Yeah, just, just real quickly, you kind of alluded to it that you literally went no, but it looks like the trending of the number of doses coming to Clackamas County is growing. I was stunned by the disparity of, of the distribution to other counties and how much more they're vaccinated than we have been, and also other states having significantly more doses per capita than, and the vaccination rate is much higher than ours, not all, but just some. But, so that we're trending significantly up from where we were two or three weeks ago as far as number of dosages, Philip?
This will be the first week where I think we'll get a significant uptake. We've been getting about 3,800 first-dose vaccines, Moderna vaccines locally each week, plus automatically the second dose comes for whatever we did, you know, a few weeks before. I think this will be the first week where we hopefully see, I mean, at least several hundred, if not a couple thousand additional doses coming in locally for us.
Yeah, great. I just want to just, just acknowledge, thank you for the slides that you provided, those extra slides about the demographics of who's getting vaccinated, who's hospitalized and so forth. It demonstrates to me that the most vulnerable population, the senior citizens, for example, those numbers are coming down significantly. They were the first to be vaccinated, so I think the vaccination is demonstrating that it's effective for those populations, so it's encouraging.
Thank you, and I do want to share, every person hospitalized is unvaccinated.
Excellent.
Did you address the comment from Commissioner Savis when he said that Clackamas County has a disparity in vaccinations to other counties, and what was your answer on that?
We have seen, you know, some of the smaller counties have gotten a larger proportion of vaccine, so 200 doses in a small county can go a lot farther than it can here. So when you look at the percentages, yeah, there is that, the larger county have smaller percentages proportion of doses that have been coming to us. That's going to shift over time as now those counties are pretty much able to meet the demand.
So it's not just Clackamas County?
No.
It's Washington, Multnomah, Marion?
Marion, yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Christina.
I have Commissioner Schrader, then Commissioner.
Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Yeah, I have, Philip, my question is, you know, the contract tracing, have we had to staff up because of the surge? I know that you said most of it isn't people answering the phone, but do we have enough people to actually do the follow-up at this point?
Well, there's a few issues that, when we have this many cases in a state, the state database really slow, bogs down, slows down. So we have staff that have to work on the evenings, the weekends. That's been a challenge. It's not necessarily staffing. We staffed up in the fall, and we kept those staff, because when cases are lower, they're able to vaccinate, and we have them out doing clinics. So there's plenty of work to be done. We have 80 temporary staff that we've had to hire in public health in order to respond to contact tracing and the vaccine effort.
So then you really would say that's largely people just not responding at this point, and that staffing has not been an issue? The other question I had was, when you said 41.7, 0.1% fully vaccinated, I'm assuming that means the two doses?
Forty.
Of Moderna and Pfizer, and then one dose of J&amp;J?
40.1% have at least got one dose, I would say, at least one vaccine.
Okay, so it isn't, it isn't, they're not, they're vaccinated, but they still have a second dose to get there. And what are the majority of the vaccines that we're receiving in the county, Moderna, Pfizer, or J&amp;J? Which I guess J&amp;J is now okay to use again.
Yeah, we have been receiving Moderna. It's a lot easier to store and handle. The Convention Center, mostly the hospitals are who have Pfizer at this point, and then J&amp;J will, the state will receive a small amount next week, and then moving forward, that should really accelerate quickly. I think in a couple weeks, we'll be getting a significant amount of Johnson &amp; Johnson locally, thousands.
And then finally, you know, the business recovery centers have been really received very positively by our business community. This may be a question for Gary. So we are expecting dollars from the American Recovery Act, so have we, are we working on a plan to funnel more dollars to those businesses so they can pay their rents and keep staff and so on and so forth? In other words, are we going to be funneling, potentially funneling those dollars to our business community through the, the recovery centers?
Staff will be making a recommendation to you Commissioners shortly, but yes, there is a proposal to support businesses, yes.
And we don't know at what level yet?
Not yet, no.
Okay, and that'll be within the week, next week?
Nancy, would you answer that, please?
No, Commissioner, we, we, first of all, we don't have the money yet. I need, I know I keep saying that, but I, everyone needs to understand, we don't have a dime in our bank yet, so, but we are working through May and working with the community and working on the proposal that we hope to have here by the first of June or mid-June.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you Chair Smith. Few questions. Oh, I don't know if it was two or three weeks ago, maybe two weeks ago, there was an effort through Lakos We Go Fire to assist frontline workers. We were contracting with them. Is that still happening for frontline workers?
Yes, that's still happening. They have agreed to help vaccinate all of the restaurant workers and the grocery store workers across the entire Clackamas County.
Great, and how do people?
Fantastic partners.
How do people get access to those appointments?
So we've contacted employers directly. We have the contact information of all the restaurants because our environmental health program licenses them, and then for the grocery workers, the Oregon Department of Ag licensed grocery stores across the state, and they have helped us communicate and message to all of those employment, employers.
Okay, and then if we, out in the community and hear of someone who is a frontline worker who doesn't, whose employer has not given them that information?
I would love to know that. So if, if, encourage folks, covidvaccine@clackamas.us, and we'll have staff reach out to their employer.
Okay, so it's always through the employer, the individual employee can't call directly to get on that?
They can certainly contact us and let, let them know that they're a frontline worker and access any additional opportunities to get the vaccine that are available in the community at large, too, of course.
And then there are more frontline workers besides grocery and restaurants, are they also eligible to go through Lakos We Go Fire?
That, I would say, the other resource that's available in the community, it's, we know food, restaurant workers, grocery store workers are at high risk, and it, I mean, that's one of the challenges, is that there's a centralized, easy way to contact folks directly and get them plugged in. I would encourage folks to, to visit our website, call our call center, or try to go to the Convention Center to get the vaccine if they're outside of that.
Okay, and then last, was it last week? Gosh, the weeks start blending together. We had some metrics based on our communities of color and the disparities, and we were looking at much more significant outreach and connection. How are we doing with that?
It's still all hands on deck. We'll probably bring that back every couple weeks.
Okay.
You can, you can monitor and compare over time and see, track how we're doing.
Okay, because if there's anything that we can do as Commissioners to help, if we need different types of resources or expertise, please let us know, because really want to prioritize those, you know, removing those disparities.
Thank you.
Another thing I'm hearing out there is that people may have gone to the Convention Center, got dose number one, but they can't get, and they had to miss their appointment for dose number two for whatever reason, they're not able to get rescheduled. Is that a known glitch in the system, and where should we send those people?
Yeah, that is one of the most popular issues that have been coming up, folks missing their second dose, because ideally, you go four weeks later, same time, same location to get your second dose. Life happens, that doesn't always work for folks. The Convention Center specifically, they do have their own call center to get you an appointment at a different time. Anybody else, if they're having challenges at one of our local pharmacies at Clackamas County, one of our clinics, they need to call our call center, or they need to email covidvaccine@clackamas.us, and we will get them into a clinic. It might not be the same location that they got their first dose.
Okay.
But we'll certainly make sure that they get their second.
How do we get the Convention Center direct phone number?
You know, I don't have that off the top of my head, but we can work with Public and Government Affairs to send that out and make sure the Board.
Okay, I'm still hearing it's super hard for people to get vaccines. I'm also hearing that Spanish-speaking, if they're not connected to one of the community-based organizations, they just don't know how to access or where to go. So I have someone in particular that just reached out to me on behalf of someone, I need to get information, which I'd probably ask Maria, and she'll help me get that, but it's definitely, definitely a challenge in figuring that piece out. Okay, my last question, which kind of concerns me, since 71% of the new cases were not contacted for contact tracing or did not receive contact tracing, are we able to track where the cases are coming from and where the, I mean, before we knew they were traced to not schools, but after-school activities from youth, and then transferring the virus out to community? Is it different now, or do we know?
That's, that's one of the challenges, when you, if you don't have the contact tracing, if folks aren't participating, it makes it harder to truly know. Your data's incomplete, you don't know the whole story. So when, moving forward, as I share the outbreaks and where are they happening, just know that that data has limitations.
Okay, understood. And then as more people get vaccinated, will, are there discussions at the state level of changing the metrics, even if that happens before the three-week extreme risk? Is there any tying to vaccination and risk metrics?
So funny you should mention that, because Dr. President and I have meetings with senior Oregon Health Authority leadership, Dr. Seidlinger and others back on the books, or we had taken a stop from that for a while, now they're back, back on the calendar, which is good to have those conversations. So I hope to update you in the next couple weeks, but that's certainly something that we want to continue to advocate for.
Okay, I think I can speak for all my Commissioners, they can nod. We are hearing loud and clear that this, this phase right now does not make any sense for, since the larger percentage of our population is getting vaccinated, and it doesn't make sense that the metrics are, or the restrictions are what they are at this time, so.
Thank you for that, Commissioner, I appreciate it, yeah.
Thank you. Chair Smith, that's all I have for now.
Yes, Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, just, just one quick follow-up, just building on the conversation at hand here. On the contact tracing, we were going to hire like 60, 70, 80 people, and I'm not sure we ever got there, but it seems to me that the contact tracing, the lack of people taking the calls, that it's not as, as good of a tool as we anticipated it being. Is that a fair assessment?
I think we're really staffed appropriately at around 50 to 60 people doing this work. When the database is slow and folks aren't answering the phone, I mean, I can staff up more, but I don't know if it's going to solve that issue.
Right, and I'm assuming that if the, if the demographic is getting lower in age, that it might be the difficulty is probably with the younger demographic taking the call?
Yep, and we text, we try to do just a survey that folks can do, that's secure and protected, so if they don't want to talk on the phone, we, we've been trying different ways to try to reach, reach folks.
Right, yep, and just to follow up on Commissioner Fisher's last statement, I, I think the remedy prescribed here with the, you know, going to extreme risk is somewhat misdirected.
Thank you, Commissioner, on that. Any more comments for these two presenters? Gary, we have some business regarding this.
Yes, so next, still under COVID, there is a proposed statement that the Board of Commissioners may choose to make regarding the extreme risk category. Public and Government Affairs staff has sent you a draft. Tonya Holowetsky, who is Deputy Director of Public and Government Affairs, is here to quickly tee it off for you. Go ahead, please, Tonya.
Thank you, Gary. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning Chair Smith and Commissioners. As we know, we're moving into the extreme risk level, and so we prepared this draft statement for you to release in response to the Governor's planned announcement tomorrow. And we attempted to make the statement reflect your concerns, the concerns that were mentioned here, and with this decision, and also the consequences that businesses and residents will face as a result of the changed risk level. It also, in the statement, we implore the community to continue to take steps to help bring the county's risk level back down by getting vaccinated, wearing a mask, and practicing distancing measures. Upon the release of the statement, once it is approved, we will follow up with a public campaign that we've designed to reinforce the public messages that I just mentioned, and we've shared a few examples of that campaign with you. So, with that, I'd love to hear your thoughts and suggestions on the statement, and also on the ensuing campaign.
Commissioners, I assume you all have read this statement, and I would like to entertain a discussion, if anybody has any remarks on this. Commissioner Scholl?
I support the statement in regards to getting the word out to the people of the county to practice due diligence and safety in regards to combating COVID. I do not support anything in the statement that supports locking down our churches, schools, and our businesses any longer. Thank you.
Tonia, is there anything in this statement that reflects Commissioner Scholl's concerns?
We don't specifically talk about churches or schools, but if you look at the second paragraph, we do say that our business community, restaurants, and public planned events, will all need to regroup and shutter indoor activities as a result. So, I think that speaks to that notion. And again, that this is distressing news for all of us, and it puts another surprising and unpredictable obstacle in front of those who propel our economy. So, I think we're taking a pretty forceful, making a pretty forceful statement.
What you have done, you have stated the facts as being presented to us, and you've also stated that we don't like it. So, I understand that, and I appreciate that. Is there any more comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, I just want to say, I support the letter, and most importantly, I think that we include the message of people taking all the precautions, including encouraging people to get their vaccination. So, just want to just say that as an endorsement.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with Paul.
Okay, Commissioner Schrader, are you okay with the letter? No comments?
Yes, I'm okay with it. However, I will state that I am very concerned about the state of our businesses. This is an extreme hardship on them, and if this is, if the route they have to take is once again shutting down, I strongly suggest that we make a big priority out of assisting them so they can survive.
Well, ironically, you know, I feel the same as my Commissioners, too, and our businesses are going to be taking a hit where our businesses have not been the cause of the breakout. In my conversations with the Governor on last Friday, she held a Zoom meeting with the chairs across Oregon on this topic, and I was very pointed in my comments to her. Number one, Governor, you have not answered the letter that these Commissioners wrote to you. We demand an answer. Number two, I've been presenting to you for two months now, through you directly and to your staff, let's at least start having a conversation in this state in how to live with viruses known and unknown of the future, and that includes the same technology used in airlines. As we know, our airlines have been flying in packed capacity, and there is no outbreaks. In fact, I've never seen cleaner places than our airlines, and our restaurants can replicate that. Restaurants and restaurateurs have gone to the Governor and pleaded for the same thing. We can't even have a conversation in this state about that, and that is a crying shame. Next Monday, I will have another conversation with my tri-chairs of Washington, Multnomah Counties, and myself with the Governor's aide, and I will bring that up again for the umpteenth time. We have the technology, science, and innovation to move forward, but yet, we need state leadership to allow this to happen. We have hundreds of millions of dollars coming into this state. I think it's proactive, and I think it's incumbent upon all governments to look toward the future and not rest in the past in fear of what might happen. So, Commissioners, we are going to take a poll and pass this resolution. Christina, please call.
There's been no motion, Chair.
That's right, we need a motion.
I moved to approve the letter.
Yeah, the motion, Paul.
Moved to approve the message.
Yes, Commissioner Savas has moved to approve, Commissioner Fisher has seconded that motion. Thank you very much. Christina?
I will call the poll. Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
No.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye, motion passes for one. Thank you, go forth and do what PGA does best on this.
Thank you.
Yes, Gary, what's up next?
Thank you, Tonia, Nancy, and Philip. Next, public hearings. The first public hearing is approval of a resolution adopting the Clackamas County Transit Development Plan. Dan Johnson, Director of Transportation and Development, will present.
Thank you so much. Chair Smith, members of the Board, Administrator Schmidt, I am pleased to be here to present the transit plan for adoption through resolution. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Karen Bureg from our Long Range Planning Group to discuss this in more detail. Thank you.
Wonderful. Good morning, Commissioners. Today, I'll be providing you a short presentation on the Transit Development Plan. On March 30th, the Board received an extensive overview of the Clackamas County Transit Development Plan and directed staff to schedule today's public hearing and adoption through resolution. In 2017, the Oregon Legislature passed Keep Oregon Moving, HB 2017, creating a new source of funds for transit projects. These funds, called the State Transportation Improvement Fund, STIF, are available for transit projects both inside and outside existing transit districts or service areas. Projects are required to be in a locally-approved plan to be eligible for HB 2017 funding. Adopting the Clackamas County Transit Development Plan fulfills this requirement and allows projects identified within the plan to be eligible for consideration for STIF funds. In 2018, the Department of Transportation and Development was awarded funds from the Transportation and Growth Management Program to undertake the development of the Transit Development Plan for Clackamas County. And in 2019, in December 2019, we began the project. The project was guided by a project management team, a technical advisory committee, and a project advisory committee, with members representing a wide range of stakeholders' values and interests. The Clackamas County Transit Development Plan provides guidance on transit connections between existing providers outside of the TriMet area and providers between and transit service within the TriMet area. The Transit Development Plan includes transit project priorities to connect communities within Clackamas County, both urban and rural, and provides guidance on infrastructure investments needed to support transit use throughout the county, and it will be used to guide future transit investments and to communicate a coordinated vision for transit service and access within the county. So, during the process of developing the Transit Development Plan, a vision and a set of goals and objectives were developed, an overview of the baseline conditions were completed, and then various needs for connections were identified. Using this input from online surveys and other outreach, the needed future service network areas were developed and then prioritized. The Transit Development Plan also includes information about infrastructure that is needed to support transit service, as well as recommendations related to land use strategies and development. There is a high-level assessment of funding and implementation options and a program that can be used to monitor the success of the plan. So, overall, the Transit Development Plan does include short-term, medium-term, and long-term priorities for future transit service network, and the recommendations indicate where a new service should be implemented and where additional service should be added. So, adoption of the Transit Development Plan will allow the county and other transit providers to consider these projects for future STIF plans. So, in conclusion, there was extensive public outreach that was conducted during the course of this project. It included two online surveys, outreach to community planning organization, targeted presentations to community groups, social media posts. There were four technical advisory committees and meetings, and on the technical advisory committee were representatives from the different transit providers. There were three presentations to the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee. And finally, the Project Advisory Committee met four times throughout the project, and at their last meeting in January, recommended the approval of the Clackamas County Transit Development Plan. So, within the packet provided to you at your March policy session, there were four letters of support for this plan. One was from Sandy Area Metro, one was from the South Clackamas Transportation District, another was from South Metro Area Regional Transit, and then the other was from the City of Estacada. So, with that, I conclude my presentation and recommend adoption through resolution of the Clackamas County Transit Development Plan.
We have the resolution in front of us and online. Do we have any, oh, Paul, you're up.
Yeah, so, I just wanted to just give a shout-out to Karen Bureg for her hard work on this, I really appreciate it. I just thought I'd just give a little bit of background on the story. She gave quite a good background on it, but I brought the idea of a transit plan to the HB 2017 STIF Committee, it was Regional Committee, for the entire region to do this study of this, so we could demonstrate where the needs were region-wide and where the dollars are going to get more transit out to the areas that don't have it. This plan demonstrates that there's significant areas in Clackamas County that do not have transit. I appreciate, number one, Karen's work, I appreciate all of our other providers that have contributed to this and provide services in Clackamas County. I just want to acknowledge them for their good work, and I'm happy to make the motion.
We need to open a public hearing. Are there any other comments from Commissioners at this time? I will now open the public meeting for public testimony. Is there anybody in, I don't see anybody here to testify on in-person. Christina, is there anybody online?
Yes, I have five people registered to speak.
For the transit? Okay, thank you.
So, I will just start with the beginning of my list. That's going to be Ray Atkinson. I'm going to go ahead and allow you to talk. Please unmute yourself, state your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes.
This is Ray Atkinson. I live in Oregon City. Live car-free in Oregon City. While it isn't easy to live car-free in Oregon City, I've never owned a car because I do not feel comfortable driving and prefer walking, biking, riding transit. I ride transit frequently and want to ride transit to places that currently have limited or no transit service. The Transit Development Plan is important to me. The plan is also important to me because I manage transportation services at Clackamas Community College. I represent CCC on the Plan Strength Technical Advisory Committee. I support adopting the plan because I feel my concerns were listened to throughout the planning process. Specifically, I was concerned about how the Estacada Redland Oregon City service was originally shown as a long-term recommendation. This service was changed to a medium-term recommendation after I shared how CCC students have requested better transit service between Estacada and the Oregon City campus. Due to no existing direct transit service between Estacada and Oregon City campus, students have had to ride TriMet to Clackamas Town Center and transfer to the CCC Express Shuttle to access the Oregon City campus. I look forward to continuing to partner with the county to improve this transit connection and implement the other plan recommendations. Please adopt the plan, thank you for listening to my concerns.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Looks like next up is going to be Dwight Brashier. Go ahead and unmute yourself, and you have three minutes.
All right, I will try to be brief. Good morning, Commissioner, Chair Smith, and Commissioners. Some of you may know me, I am the Transit Director for SMART in the City of Wilsonville, and I was part of the Technical Advisory Committee that helped guide this particular study. You know, when I look at the results of this study, I often think about the comments that are made by Commissioner Savas, describes the areas of Clackamas County as a transit desert, and he is absolutely right. And though this may not eliminate the desert, it certainly will become an oasis for a number of individuals that crave and desire good transit. This is an investment in transit, and I am part of the coalition of small providers. We meet every week, every Wednesday, we meet to discuss issues that are relevant to Clackamas County. And we are committed, as a group, to ensuring that we cover as much of Clackamas County as possible. And if you had an opportunity to look at this particular study, there are, you know, there's one particular project that I'm excited about that would allow my agency to run service between Wilsonville and Clackamas Town Center, hitting all of the stops along the way so that we can get as many folks along that I-205 as possible. I'm interested in investing in transit along that corridor, even ahead of any discussion about tolling. I think it's been long overdue, and so I urge the adoption of this plan. Thank you for your time, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Dwight, your comments are well-taken. Next up?
Oh, right next up is Andy Howell. Andy, go ahead and unmute yourself, state your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Yes, thank you, good morning Commissioners, and thank you for allowing comments this morning regarding the Transit Development Plan. My name is Andy Howell, I am also one of those transit providers in our Clackamas County Coalition mentioned by my colleague Dwight Brashier. I am the Transit Director for the City of Sandy, well-known as SAM, Sandy Area Metro. I'm also the President of the Oregon Transit Association, and I'm a Clackamas County resident. This morning, I'd like to take the opportunity to support the adoption of the Transit Development Plan. As a rural provider, I especially appreciate that this plan identifies needs and opportunities of collaboration, not only with our metro partners, but also in the rural areas of our county, where I'm sure you are aware, there are many transportation needs. The identification of needs coupled with recommendations to improve our services throughout our county will benefit all of us as we identify service enhancements for the use of House Bill 2017 statewide improvement funds, as well as other sources of transportation funding for our future. In conclusion, I hope you approve the adoption of the Clackamas County Transit Development Plan, and again, thank you for listening to my comments this morning, and thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you, Andy. We will move on to our next. It looks like that is going to be Taylor Campy. Taylor, go ahead and unmute yourself, state your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Hi, thank you. My name's Taylor Campy. I live in Portland, Oregon, and I work in Estacada. I'm the city planner for the City of Estacada, and I just wanted to hop on here and voice our support for the adoption of this plan. Improving transit in and around our region is a really important and exciting opportunity for our community, and so, yeah, full support, and thank you guys very much for having us.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Taylor. We'll go ahead and move on to the next. We have Tom Strater. Tom, go ahead and unmute yourself, state your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, this is Tom Strater, I live in Malala, Oregon. I am the Transit Director at South Clackamas Transportation District in Malala. We provide transit service in the rural area in South Clackamas County. We connect Malala to Hanby Area Transit, as well as SMART. And we connect Malala to Oregon City, where we connect to TriMet and the Clackamas Community College Shuttle. I was able to participate in the development of the plan as part of the Technical Advisory Committee. I did previously submit a letter in support of the plan, and so I will be very brief. I did just, again, want to urge your approval of the plan. I think it's a very well-researched, very well-reasoned document. I believe that it goes a long ways in making sure that we continue to help improve transportation options and accessibility in Clackamas County, and especially in rural areas throughout the county. And I think, although we certainly have some work to do, it goes a great way in helping to make sure that there's a roadmap in place to maintain options and address gaps where they do exist. I urge your approval of the plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Christina? Thank you very much. Christina?
And we actually have one last person, Angela Nyland. Angela, if you can unmute yourself, state your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Great, thank you. My name's Angela Nyland, and I live in Boring. All in favor of the plan. I understand that there's lines that need to be improved, but I really hope this focuses on those of us who have no public transportation at all. Like I said, I live in Boring. There's parts of Damascus. I mean, Boring's really close to Gresham. It's six miles away, and I have no way to get there. There is one way, public transportation-wise. I can walk up Highway 26 on the side of the highway, three and a half miles to get to SAM, to get into Gresham, which, you know, that became too dangerous for me. I wore the orange jacket. I wore it, you know, headlight. People on Highway 26 are not looking for pedestrians, but that's the only way I could get to a SAM to get into Gresham, and I am a senior citizen. So, you know, like I said, that got too dangerous. So now I have to Uber everywhere to be safe. And I think that's really, you know, we're really close to, you know, a lot of the areas in Metro, it's not serviced by TriMet, you know. It would be really great if we could focus. A lot of people out here work in town. We could take the bus. Highway 212, boy, that's some people that work in town that could really use some public transportation. Thank you so much, and I hope you all have a great day.
Thank you. Christina?
That is the rest of my list.
I will now close the public hearing and ask if there is any further discussion. Christina?
Commissioner Fisher, has her hand raised?
Commissioner Fisher.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Smith. Our last constituent, Angela, makes a really good point, and it takes me back to a conversation that I had with Dwight, our first presenter from SMART, about, and Commissioner Savis has talked about the challenge of getting people to transit lines throughout Clackamas County. And so I'm just interested in how flexible this plan is as we evolve to more, because Angela was saying that she does Uber. I know that in Wilsonville, they have a process and have been working on getting people from their homes to transit lines. How flexible is this plan as we evolve to be more specific towards what individual residents need to get them from their homes to transit lines? Like with what Commissioner Savis has said, like, would you call it a jitney?
A local jitney, circulators, shuttles.
So I guess I'll answer that in two parts. One is, within the Transit Development Plan, we do acknowledge the importance of what is called mobility hubs, which are really those places where different types of getting around, like both transit, biking, places where they can, people can connect to things like Uber and Lyft, and be able to make that last mile. So it talks about the need for that type of investment. I also, with regards to the flexibility of the plan, it does indicate that this should be updated, you know, on a regular basis, so that we can reflect the changing needs of the county. And so this is a starting place. This is the very first time we've adopted something like this, but we would anticipate that we would also be able to adopt it and update it in the future.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. I really appreciate everybody who spoke on this today. It really helped, helped sort of fill in the edges of the pieces of paper that we review, and really appreciate that.
Yes, and Commissioner Scholl's questions have been answered as well. Seeing no comments, I'll entertain a motion.
So Chair, I will, I'll make a motion to approve the plan.
I'll second.
Commissioner Savis has made the motion for approval. Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just one thing, Chair. I just want to, again, just acknowledge Karen for her great work on this, and all the other providers for their assistance, the Technical Committee, all the people that participated in the plan. You know, it's been very evident that the reason that these rural transit providers have come into existence is because of the lack of service, and the cities of Malala, Canby, Wilsonville, Sandy, and others have stepped up to the plate. You know, I think it was, should be noted that Clackamas County, of the tri-county region, has more transit districts than any other county, actually all of them combined, frankly. I mean, I think that should speak to the need and the disparity in the funding. So again, I want to thank everyone, and I'm ready to.
Good point, Commissioner Savis. Commissioner Schrader, you have comment?
Yeah, I just want to remind people, some little bit of historic institutional memory here, is that the reason why our communities could move into the transit arena was a result of work done by Congressman Darlene Hooly and, at the time, Senator Kirk Schrader. So proud to know that we had folks way back in the day who saw this as becoming a huge connection piece in this county, and I believe it was because of their efforts that we are connected today. And as Commissioner Savis says, we have a significantly improved transit system because of that.
Fine. Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Seeing no further discussion. Christina, would you please call the poll?
Okay. Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye. The motion has passed 5-0. Thank you very much. Gary?
Thank you, Karen and Dan. Next, the next public hearing is a public hearing to permit a gate on Hofelt Drive. Dan Johnson, Director of Transportation and Development, will also present.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, if you recall, at issues a number of weeks ago, we had a brief discussion around this various topic. We don't gate a lot of roads, to be frank. We rarely do these type of applications, but I have Mike Bays from our Engineering Department joining me to share our review of this request and some possible conditions, and we look forward to an interesting discussion. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner, excuse me. Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners. My name is Michael Bays. I represent Clackamas County's Department of Transportation and Development. We're here for a public hearing to hear testimony regarding permitting a gate across a public right-of-way. The county received an application to gate a section of Hofelt Drive. Hofelt Drive is a non-maintained local access road located near Welch's north of Highway 26 and was dedicated to the public August 25, 1925. The portion of Hofelt Drive at issue serves two permanent residents and the petitioner's community water supply. The owners of 100% of the abutting properties to the road to be gated have signed a consent to gate, excuse me, signed a consent to gate form as required. The petitioners wish to gate a portion of Hofelt Drive lying north of Woodlands Road to their property, north property line. A 12-foot-deep, 25-foot-wide seasonal creek effectively cuts off Hofelt Drive, preventing further travel along the right-of-way. The portion of Hofelt Drive the petitioner's proposed to gate is approximately 540 feet long and is a gravel one-lane road. Hofelt Drive serves no public need and is not a benefit to the traveling public. Gating this portion of road right-of-way will not affect area traffic flow or deprive public access to adjoining properties. State law and the county code specifically give the Board jurisdiction to deny or allow a permit for the construction of the gate across said Hofelt Drive, the purpose of us being here today. In addition, pursuant to county code, the Board may impose conditions to gate, to a gate permit as follows. Specifications regarding the method and means of construction of the gate, a requirement that the person issuing, issued the permit shall bear all costs of construction and maintenance of the gate, and any other conditions the Board deems reasonable. At the conclusion of this hearing, the Board may permit Rododendron Water Association to construct a gate across Hofelt Drive, or permit Rododendron Water Association to construct a gate across Hofelt Drive, subject to the proposed conditions regarding the gate, or deny Rododendron Water Association request to construct a gate across Hofelt Drive. Staff respectfully recommends the Board approve their proposed gate at a, construction of a gate, subject to the following conditions. The person issued the permit shall bear all costs of construction and maintenance of the gate, and the gate will accommodate emergency vehicle access by providing a minimum 25-foot-wide clearance when open, and if locked, will employ a locking system, such as a Knox box or lock system that is approved by the Hoodland Fire District, and a contact phone number for the responsible party will be posted on or near the gate for access issues. Once the Board has made a decision, staff will draft an order formalizing the decision and placing it on a consent agenda at a later business meeting for formal approval. I would be happy to take any questions.
We have a gentleman in the audience who wants to come testify.
Could you open the public hearing, please?
I forgot to open the public hearing. I will now open the public hearing. There we go. I was reading ahead on my papers, and I was so excited that we have somebody in person who wants to testify on this. Steve Graper, would you please come forward? State your name and your residence, and you have three minutes.
And Chair, I ask your indulgence. I've timed my remarks, and they exceed the three minutes by about a minute and 45 seconds.
Go ahead. Just try to be brief.
I will speak as rapidly as I possibly can. Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Stephen Graper, and I am President of the Rododendron Water Association. I am here this morning to ask for the BCC's support of the DTD's request for approval of the Rododendron Water Association's application to place an automatic gate on a county-owned road at the intersection of Hofelt and Woodlands Road in Rododendron, Oregon. The Water Association has made this application and is requesting this gate for a number of reasons. One, convenience to the vacationing public. Two, peace of mind for the residents who reside along Hofelt. Three, security of the Rododendron Water Association treatment reservoir and pumping facility. How is this request a convenience to the vacationing public? According to all GPS mapping software, including the county's own CMAP website, Hofelt Road is depicted as a through street extending from Woodlands Road through to McFarland Road. See Exhibit A that you have been presented. Unfortunately, the maps and GPS guidance are incorrect. Why? Because there is an ecologically sensitive seasonal stream that flows in a ravine from west to east, or from east to west, across where Hofelt Road would traverse the stream. To cross that stream, a very expensive bridge would need to be built at county expense just to comply with the maps and make Hofelt a through street. I have my doubts that the county would commit precious and limited financial resources just to make a local county gravel road a through street. But here's the problem. There are no less than three VRBOs and Airbnbs that have addresses listed on Hofelt Road, plus more on McFarland and Tiger Lily. When the vacationing public uses GPS to locate their weekend vacation rental, they attempt to access the rentals via Hofelt from Woodlands Road because the maps show that it is a through street. Unfortunately, those vacation rentals can only be accessed using Old Smokey and East McFarland Road. When the vacationer discover that they cannot reach their destination, they turn around in disgust and peel out, substantially disturbing the gravel that the Water Association was required to place in the roadway as part of our conditional use permit. Placing a gate at the intersection of Hofelt and Woodlands Road would immediately inform the vacationer that this is not the correct route, and signs placed on the gate would direct them to Old Smokey and McFarland, making for a much more convenient and pleasant vacationing experience. Why is this peace of mind for the residents who reside along Hofelt? In spite of the rental company instructions on how to access their rental units and the numerous signs located at the intersection of Hofelt and Woodlands Road indicating that this is a dead end, that GPS is wrong, and that no vacation rentals are located down this road, vacationers still choose to use GPS and insist that the road goes through. The residents who live along Hofelt are constantly being harassed by irate vacationers who insist Hofelt is a through street because the mapping apps say it is. Upset that they cannot access their vacation units as anticipated, they usually speed back down Hofelt to Woodlands so that they can attempt a different access route. Placing an automatic gate at the intersection of Woodlands and Hofelt would eliminate errant drivers from being mistakenly directed down Hofelt, thus eliminating the disruption to the neighbors by the vacationers peeling out and speeding back down Hofelt, thus giving the residents greater peace of mind. Lastly, and most importantly, security for the Rododendron Water Association treatment reservoir and pumping facility. In 2018, Rododendron Water Association constructed 135,000-gallon concrete reservoir and pump station at the end of Hofelt Road. As a potable water provider, it is incumbent upon us, as a security measure, to maintain some element of anonymity for our treatment facilities. Allowing vacationers or just the curious automotive public to travel down Hofelt and turn around at our modified Hammerhead, which was also a requirement of our county-issued conditional use permit, also serves to draw attention to the fact that there is a huge concrete structure located at the end end of Hofelt, and that it is ripe for tagging and/or other nefarious activities. Placing a gate at Hofelt and Woodlands would serve as a deterrent and restrict access to our water reservoir and pump station. So, in summation, the Rododendron Water Association is requesting BCC approve our request to gate Hofelt as submitted and recommended by the DTD staff report. We are aware that if at any time the county wishes to make Hofelt a through street, we would be more than accommodating and remove the gate. In the meantime, Rododendron Water has submitted the required $250 gate application fee. Rododendron Water has obtained the notarized gate consent approval from each and every resident who owns property along Hofelt. We have also obtained written permission from the Hoodland Fire Marshal to gate Hofelt as long as we provide the required Knox box for easy access in case of emergency, and our gate contractor has informed us that USPS, UPS, Federal Express, and Amazon delivery trucks are all provided with a universal code to gain access through the gate when deliveries are necessary. Additionally, the two residents who permanently live on Hofelt will be provided handheld remote controls in order to gain access to their places of residence. RWA has painstakingly made sure that all aspects of this application has its i's dotted and its t's crossed in order to move forward with this application. The DTD needs approval from the BCC to gate the county road, and I am respectfully requesting you give DTD that approval.
Thank you.
And I thank you for your consideration. I thank you for the leniency, and I thank you for the time and all the work that you do.
Thank you very much. Christina?
We have no registered on Zoom.
Nobody is registered on Zoom. It's the end of the list. I will close the public hearing and ask if there's any further comments from my commission. Commissioner Scholl?
Yes, Mr. Graper, your plan shows a 12-foot gate, and DDT recommended a 25-foot opening?
20-foot.
20-foot. Do you, Mr. Graper, agree that you can do that?
We would need to work with the fencing contractor. The 12-foot gate was approved by the Hoodland Fire Marshal, and it's our understanding in that right of way is a 20-foot right-of-way and not a 40-foot right-of-way. So a 25-foot gate opening would be, would be.
Excuse me, Mr. Graper. I need you to come up and speak into the microphone.
Sorry.
Restate your name, and.
I'm Stephen Graper, Rododendron Water Association, and we have spoken with the fencing contractor. The 12-foot gate has been approved by the Fire Marshal, and this is the first I've heard from the DTD about the 25-foot opening, and we have to go back and reevaluate that because my understanding is that the right-of-way for Hofelt is 20 feet, not 40 feet.
Okay, I will have our staff address that. Mr. Bays, can you address that difference?
Yes, I will definitely discuss this with Hoodland Fire to make sure that they're happy with the access. The 20-foot comes from our roadway standard for residential use, and again, I'll review the right-of-way width and work with Hoodland Fire and adjust our conditions for the consent agenda. If Hoodland Fire's good, I think we'll be good with it.
Mr. Johnson, is that okay with you?
Yep.
Okay. Any further questions, Mr. Scholl?
Mr. Graper, is that okay with you?
That is fine with me.
Okay.
All right. So you're going to massage this a little bit before it comes back for final approval?
Absolutely.
Okay, there we go. There is a very specific motion, and I would like the maker to read that, please. I'll entertain a motion. Mark, read the motion.
I'll get to it here.
And just for point of clarification for our commissioners, we have motions written out.
I got it.
I've got it here, Chair. I move we permit Rododendron Water Association to construct a gate across Hofelt Drive and direct staff to draft an order formalizing this decision and place it on the consent agenda for formal approval.
Second.
Second.
Commissioner? Commissioner Shoal has made the motion. Commissioner Fisher has seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Christina, would you please call the poll?
Yes, Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Shoal?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion has passed 5-0. Gary, what's up next?
All right, thank you, Mike and Dan. Next is a board discussion item for a board order to revise the effective date of ordinance number 9-2020, short-term rentals. Dan Johnson will present. Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you so much. I'm going to keep this short and sweet. On March 30th, we came in front of the Board of County Commissioners, and at that time, we had a lengthy discussion around the short-term rental program here in Clackamas County. Currently, there is a implementation deadline of July 1, 2021, in place. The Board requested or agreed with staff to delay that for another year to July 1, 2022. At that policy session, we had informed the Board that we had to go through two hearings to revise that. That was incorrect. County Council has advised us, we can simply do it through the approval of this resolution attached today, and we are seeking, respectfully requesting, the Board of County Commissioners approve this resolution.
Do any Commissioners have clarifying questions on this? May I have a motion with the language written in our paper?
I move to approve the board order revising the effective date of ordinance number 09-2020.
Second.
Commissioner Shoal has moved, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner, or Christina, please call the poll.
Okay, Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Shoal?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye. The motion has passed 5-0. Thank you very much, Dan.
Yeah, thanks, Dan.
Gary, what's next?
Next is the consent agenda. Christina, would you please read the consent agenda by title only?
Yes, to start it off, it's Health Housing and Human Services. Number one, approval of an intergovernmental agreement, number 160440. Amendment number four, with the State of Oregon Department of Human Services, Aging and People with Disabilities Division for the provision of services to Clackamas County residents. This agreement is for $8,617,314 funded by the federal older American Act funds and state general funds. County general funds are using $318,473 to meet the match requirements for the internal programs for the duration of this agreement. Number two, approval of a federal subrecipient grant agreement with central city concern to provide law enforcement diversion program services. The total amount will be $318,032.84 funded through the federal domestic assistance fund and the county general fund for affordable housing. Number three is approval to apply for a subrecipient grant award with Oregon Health and Science University for the partnership in the institutional review board study. OHSU will potentially pay Clackamas Health Centers up to $219,419 over a period of four years. No general funds are involved and no matching funds are required. Number four, approval of amendment number 18 and number 19 to the intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon, acting by and through its Oregon Health Authority for operation as the local public health authority for Clackamas County. Contract is increased by $6,093,870, bringing the contract maximum to $19,499,741. Funding is through the state, no general funds are involved. Number five is approval for a grant agreement with Health Share of Oregon for the Help Me Grow program. Contract maximum is $80,000. With funding through the Health Share of Oregon, no general funds are involved. Number six, approval of amendment number one with due good multnomah for Veterans Village Services. Contract is not to exceed $210,006. This will include county general funds at a policy-level proposal. Under Department of Transportation and Development, number one, approval of a local agency agreement, number 34356, with the Oregon Department of Transportation for the Knights Bridge Road, Malala River Bridge. Overall project cost estimate, $3,601,86... Funding from the state-funded local project in the amount of $3,231,254, and the county road fund totaling $369,832. No general funds are involved. Number two, approval of a contract with Collier &amp; Cohen Incorporated, do business as CNC for strategic marketing consultant services for Phase II and Phase III of the county drive-to-zero project. Total contract value is $242,000. Drive-to-zero funds under the general funds will be $187,450, plus Oregon Department of Transportation Safe Community Grant for $54,550. Under the Finance Department, a resolution approving the submission of the Assessor's County Assessment Funding FA Grant application for fiscal year 2021 and 2022. This grant provides approximately 15% of the revenue for the Assessor's Office. Under elected officials, a resolution appointing justices of the Peace Pro Tem for the Clackamas County Justice of the Peace District. Pro Tem judges are paid at an hourly rate of $48.55, plus 58 cents per mile for travel to and from the court building. This is included in the Justice Court Building, or budget, excuse me. Under disaster management, approval of a subrecipient grant agreement amendment between the City of Portland and Clackamas County for the purchase and reimbursement activities related to the use of the fiscal year 18 United States Department of Homeland Security's Urban Area Security Initiative Grant Program. This amendment will have $66,100 increase, bringing the total to $443,381, with funding from the fiscal year Department of Homeland Security Grant. No general funds are involved. Number two, approval to apply for a FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, funds to upgrade the existing Upper Sandy River Flood Warning System. Total is $85,000, 25% local match of $21,250, monthly service fees of $630, general funds for the 25% match. Number three, approval of a fiscal year 2020 Emergency Management Performance Grant supplemental between Clackamas County and the State of Oregon. The grant agreement value is $43,066, and the grant is a 50% federal share grant that will reimburse Clackamas County disaster management for up to 50% of salaries and benefits for an employee who will focus on the COVID-19 response. This will include general fund. Number four, approval of an amendment number one with Durgash LLC doing business as Econo Lodge Southeast for providing hotel rooms for homeless families and individuals. This amendment will add $164,700 for an additional 61 units and nights of lodging. Total contract value not to exceed $528,400, funded through the state general fund. No county general funds are involved. And lastly, number five, approval of amendment number one, SRS LLC, a limited liability company of Nevada doing business as Budget Inn in Gladstone, for providing hotel rooms for homeless families and individuals. Amendment will add $128,100 for an additional 61 units and nights of lodging, funding through the state general funds. No county general funds are involved, and that is your consent agenda.
Thank you, Christina. That was a lot of reading.
It was.
Any... It was, especially with a mask on. Is there any Commissioner who wishes to remove any item from the consent agenda? Any discussion on consent agenda? Seeing none, Christina, would you call the poll, please?
Point of order. Chair, I need a motion.
Motion.
Or we would need a motion.
You know, I'm just, I'm sorry. I just, yeah. May I have a motion?
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Yes, Commissioner Shoal has moved for approval, and Commissioner Fisher has seconded that emotion. Any further discussion? Please call the poll.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Shoal?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much for keeping me on track. Yes. Up next is public communication. The portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of the board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. However, we will not be reading them at the meetings due to time. I will now open the meeting, public testimony. Anybody in the room? We have these nice brochures that have been passed out that helps our presenters. I assume our online people have them as well. Yes, Christina is saying yes. I have one blue card for a person who has showed up in person in the hearing room, and that is Yvonne Lazarus. Would you come forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes?
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. I live in Clackamas County, Milwaukee.
And your name?
Yvonne Lazarus. Can you hear me?
Just speak up a little louder. Can you pull the microphone closer? Thank you.
I'm here this morning to speak about this pamphlet. This is a special district election, and I am hoping that everybody who is in the area to get this does not misplace it or throw it out, but reads it and votes. We all seem to think that unless it's a presidential election, it isn't worth doing. It is. This special district election has to do with our children. There's something in here that pertains. It all comes together, and anything that has to do with our kids is very, very important. I think that's obvious by seeing how some young adults grow up. I personally am asking this question, and I'd like you all to think about it. Whatever happened to U.S. history and world history in our classes? How can children gauge anything when they don't even know anything about their past? History is extremely important, and I am here kind of lobbying for history. I think it's an important thing, a very important thing. And that's really what I'm here for today. Thank you. Vote.
Okay, vote. Got it. Thank you, Yvonne Lazarus. Seeing no further people in the audience, Christina, do we have anybody on Zoom?
We do. We have five people registered on Zoom, and I will just start with my list. So, it looks like Michael Weber. Let me find him real quick. There he is. Michael, you're first. Go ahead and unmute yourselves, state your name, area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Before I begin, just one quick comment. Yvonne, perfect. I appreciate that. Go out and vote. Everybody, go out and vote. Thank you, Yvonne. All right. Thank you, Christine. Michael Weber, Oak Grove. Thank you, Chair Smith and Commissioners, and the hard-working staff of county admin. Yesterday, my wife and I got our second COVID vaccination at the Wilsonville Clinic that you helped stand up. I can't begin to tell you what a relief that was. We are so looking forward to being able to attend gatherings with our friends, getting out more often, and safely supporting local Clackamas County businesses. Unfortunately, new infection rates are accelerating and hospital capacity is diminishing to the point that we're now facing increased restrictions. Despite the fact that Health Services has been ringing the alarm bell for over a month, until Tuesday, I had not seen a sense of urgency from Chair Smith to tackle the problem head-on. Now, as we've moved into extreme risk, there is a rush to blame Salem and DC, and little reflection on your own responsibility for the catastrophe that you contributed to. You have given full-throated support to businesses that openly defy current state guidelines and restrictions, even when we were at moderate and high-risk levels. Rather than treating the vaccine as a crucial weapon in the fight to get us back to normalcy and trying to influence every citizen to make the responsible choice to get the shot, you have gone out of your way to publicly point out that the vaccine is voluntary and people should take it if they want to. There is a huge disconnect when you conflate my ask of responsible leadership to encourage constituents to get vaccinated with a straw man dog whistle of an argument of being against government-mandated vaccinations. No one, not President Biden nor Governor Brown, not the CDC nor Dr. Fauci, is mandating vaccines. Another missed opportunity to address this crisis head-on is your failure to refute the anti-mask and anti-vax rhetoric posted on your social media. The battle plan to get the shot, wear a mask, and keep your distance simply cannot work if people refuse to follow it. I do appreciate you mentioning getting the shot without further comment twice in your message to residents video Tuesday, and that is a welcome first step, although it would have been nice if that was also clearly communicated in the written letter that accompanied it. I sincerely hope that this is a true course correction, and we will see you as a strong advocate for making the responsible choice to get vaccinated, especially to those who are vaccine-reluctant. A call to arms to bear your arms and get the shot, as it were. I wholeheartedly endorse this right to bear arms. Thank you.
Gary, would you like to address the situation with the vaccinations and my participation in them?
Yes, so certainly, quickly, internally for county employees, we're, as an entity, we are not required to force an employee to get a vaccination. We can encourage it. We cannot require it. And really, that's the same for you, Commissioners. You can encourage it, but you should not be requiring it by our interpretation of our state and local laws. So, you give free choice to our members of the public. You have a choice as elected officials. You can encourage any member to take it. We're not going to enforce or require members of the public or our employees to take the vaccination.
Yes, I've also been working ever since the beginning of this to try with the governor, although I've been critical of how she's managing the crisis, to get more vaccinations in the Clackamas County. And whoever this Michael person is continues to lie about my position and my record on that, and I will state so every time somebody calls up and lies about what I do. Christina, up next.
Next up is Chris Waller. Chris, go ahead and unmute yourselves, state your name, area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Chris Waller, Jennings Lodge. Chair Smith, you have my sincere thanks for including the phrase "get your shot" twice in your message to residents video this Tuesday. That is a step in the right direction. Now, please up your game. You are an influencer. You have over 7,500 followers on your primary Facebook page, Tudie Smith for Oregon, over 4,000 on your personal page, and over 1,500 on Twitter. They listen to you and respect your opinion. Vaccine hesitancy is the biggest barrier to the goal of safely reopening our county. There is a huge difference between vaccine-hesitant people and the very small group of people who truly cannot get vaccinated for legitimate medical reasons. Vaccine-hesitant people usually have misconceptions such as "vaccines will change my DNA." The choice about vaccination needs to be made based on facts, not misconceptions, and the facts are that vaccines are safe and effective for the vast majority of people. The data shows that most vaccine-hesitant people are Republicans. Studies by people such as Frank Luns, a longtime Republican communications expert, have found that one thing that does get through to them is messaging from people that they trust. That's people like you, Chair Smith. You could be using your pl... You could be using your platform to correct misconceptions about COVID rather than amplify them, but you don't. As one example, on April 24th, on Tudie Smith for Oregon, you promoted a thoroughly discredited anti-mask paper from a quack medical journal as science and reason, the same paper that has been in the national news, as not from Stanford, not a real study, and most importantly, not true. Despite the warnings from Facebook that what you were posting was false, you did it anyway. You could be working to educate, correct misconceptions, and calm irrational fears. None of this takes away people's choice, Chair Smith. It just helps them make the right choice. For the sake of our county, please do the right thing and stop spreading the partisan propaganda. Be a leader. Do the real work of helping inform and guide your followers. And Commissioner Scholl, your ignorant diatribe on homelessness in Clackamas County based on camp visits with two of your friends, visits your own aide didn't know you were making, damages the very important work that this county does to actually help people get housed. It's reprehensible that you posted photos and videos on the Support Mark Scholl webpage of these people without their permission, and it's obvious that you have no idea what the actual research on effective intervention shows. And as for your claim that everyone you talked to was from Portland, I have it on good authority that many of your pictures were taken in Portland. Please retract your harmful and uninformed rhetoric. Thank you.
Thank you for your opinion. Up next, Christina.
Up next is, oh, sorry, forgot to reach that. Is going to be Bill Ware. Bill, go ahead and unmute yourself. State your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners. Bill Ware, Damascus. This morning, I want to talk about public comment. Now, my understanding is that we citizens have the right to present our comments before this governing body. Time, manner, and place is reserved for you to enforce. Commissioner Fisher has immediately challenged the testimony of certain citizens at times, including mine, on camera. Rather than addressing the subject at hand, she deflects it to saying it's politics and not county business. The citizens are not allowed to answer back. Now, I would say that Commissioner Fisher should respect the testifiers and hold her response until Commissioner comments, in which she has unlimited time. However, her definition of county business is fluid depending on time and circumstances. When she consulted her paid political advisers on a county-issued email address how to proceed with answering the written apology of Commissioner Scholl, that did become county business. When Commissioner Fisher got an extraordinary check for $10,000 in a non-election year from a county public employees' union that demanded Mr. Scholl's resignation that is unexplained, that is county business. Commissioner Fisher devotes every Commission comment time to the national Democratic talking points of the week. To her, that is county business. Any race issue from other parts of the county, country, by her is considered county business. At the same time, she continues to completely ignore the rioting and destruction that has been happening for over a year and still continues in Portland and how it impacts Clackamas County. To her, this is not county business. Rather, she expands county business to include chewing up the clock with extended woke poetry reading out of the New York Times Sunday edition. By your ill-advised actions on this Commission and your quotes damning your colleague on Commission to the media have made your problematic conduct not only a politically controversy but truly is county business. Questions have been asked concerning your performance continually at these meetings by citizens, and you stonewall. It's long past time. We need to know why you recklessly decided to inject the race card into the public discourse when so many other county problems need our attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. But I move on to the next and last one. It looks like Angela Nyland. Go ahead and unmute yourself. State your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Great, thank you so much. Hello again, Commissioners. First of all, I want to commend Marshall on looking into the homeless situation in Clackamas County, and I urge the entire Board to engage with Stan Pulliam and the mayor of Troutdale. You know, everyone's looking into it, and I would really appreciate the Board being involved with these mayors and us being able to hear about that involvement on these calls in the Board meetings, even if it's just an update, because there are some horrible situations people are living in, and, you know, things need to be done for that. Also, on COVID, changing of subject, where is it? And it's maybe I just haven't dug deep enough in the website. I would like to know, where can I find the statistics on outbreaks from restaurants and bars, specifically, not including any other type of business, just restaurants and bars? Because, you know, we're closing those down. People are running out of unemployment in those industries. There's no unemployment for them when that business closes this time around. They've already used it up. So not only are businesses going to fail, people are failing. They need, you know, what are they going to live on? So that would be, I would need help. Maybe somebody can get with me and show me where that information is that justifies these closures, you know, of restaurants and businesses. Also, to the previous caller, I object to the stereotype that anyone who isn't interested in the vaccine is uninformed and Republican. I am neither, and if I choose not to get, you know, I body my choice, and I appreciate Clackamas County acknowledging that, that we all have freedom of choice. No one is pushing from the county on the Board for people not to get the vaccine. They just realize that everyone has a choice, and I thank you for that. Thanks for all the information on COVID. Like I said, I pay attention, but, you know, I object to being called misinformed or assumed that I'm a Republican. Assumptions aren't a good thing. Thank you.
Up next, Christina.
It looks like we did have a registered Christine Kennedy, but I do not see her online, so we are all done with our list.
Okay. I will close the public communication portion of this meeting, and we will move on. Gary, do you have an administrator update?
I do, Chair Smith, yes. First, Commissioners, I am seeking your ratification of a contract I signed on your behalf under the authority of Clackamas County Emergency Declaration 2020-14, the COVID-19 declaration. It was a contract for disaster management that I signed on April 22nd, 2021. It is approval of an amendment to a personal services agreement with Northwest Family Services for culturally specific temporary administrative staff for the Public Inquiry Center in relation to the COVID-19 response. This amendment increases the number of staff provided and adds funds to the contract. The contract is increased by $72,464 for a total maximum contract value of $108,383. Funds are from the Oregon Health Authority Cares Act Fund. No general funds are involved. The contract terminates on December 30th, 2021. I'm seeking your ratification of this contract I signed on your behalf.
Any comments from Commissioners?
I move to ratify.
Seconded.
Commissioner Savas has moved to ratify this, and Commissioner Scholl has seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Christina, please call the poll.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Gary Schmidt, good news.
Thank you, Commissioners and Chair. Some quick good news items I'd like to share. First, to our Clackamas Water Environment Services team, a ratepayer named Harry contacted us to thank our Water Environment Services Field Operations Crew, who are Otis Lundgren, Shannon Troxler, and Matt Zach, for doing an exceptional job cleaning up a detention pond after the winter storms near Harry's home in Clackamas. He thanked our staff for a job well done. Each year, our Water Environment Services Crew inspects and cleans more than 2,500 storm structures in Clackamas County. So thank you, Harry, for the good words about our employees, Otis, Shannon, and Matt. Next, our Dog Services team received a excellent recognition from a member of the public who recognized our employee, Animal Control Officer Tricia Craft. The note said, "My husband and I would like to thank you for your assistance in rescuing nine dogs and two cats due to an owner's sudden hospitalization. Traveling from central Oregon, we were desperate to locate a rescue group. Officer Craft of the county was the only person to return our calls. Since we sent our pictures, Officer Craft initiated the rescue on March 24th. We cannot begin to express our gratitude and relief to Officer Craft and her staff and Clackamas County Dog Services." So thank you for the kind words, and thank you to Tricia Craft from our Dog Services team for her good service. That's my good news today. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Commissioner Communication. Our first Commissioner is Commissioner Savas.
Yeah, thank you. Just wanted to talk a little bit about, you know, one of my meetings this week, which was Wednesday morning, Economic Development Commission, and we were talking about workforce and the challenges of workforce. And in light of the recent news broadcast with regard to the businesses that are going to transition into extreme risk tomorrow, a lot of interviews were being done, and the parallel here is between those interviews and the discussion at Wednesday morning is that when there are layoffs, that the workforce of a particular business, other employees, they don't all come back, and they're lost. And they find other employment or other opportunities, and they move on or they move out of the area. So it was just striking to see last evening how many businesses were interviewed saying, you know, "We can't get people back. We can't get people into this line of work." And it really speaks to the challenges we have in workforce. It doesn't apply to all industries, but to some degree, it even applies here at Clackamas County. And, you know, I'm concerned from talking to our staff about some of the vacancies we're having difficulty filling here in Clackamas County in light of all of the needs we have, in light of all of the dollars that are coming our way, you know, for example, housing dollars, construction, the cost of construction materials, which has ballooned. It's incredible. But I'm going to stay focused here on the workforce element of it. And so with health and housing services, the need for that, the need for the dollars that are coming from Metro for the housing bond, the supportive services bond, those dollars coming forward, not a bond, but a measure. I'm just concerned about the workforce that we have to really fill those needs and our ability, our workforce, to actually administer those needs. And I think it's going to be really challenging. I think really, in light of all these dollars coming, this is where I'm shifting to, in light of all these dollars coming, both locally here in the region, the dollars that are coming from the federal government for aid from COVID, the Cares Act, the American Recovery Act, the dollars for infrastructure coming out of another plan, for infrastructure plan. We have a lot of dollars coming, and I don't think we've got the workforce, frankly, there to actually utilize those dollars to the maximum degree. I think it's incumbent upon us with the dollars we're receiving, most especially the American Recovery dollars, $81 million to the county, again, the supportive services dollars, all of those dollars, that we've really got to figure out and be very sophisticated and very strategic about our approach on how we're going to prioritize those dollars. My concern, why I raise this today, my concern is that we could overfund in some areas and underfund in others. We could find that the dollars we appropriate, maybe there's not the staffing there to do it. I'm very concerned about having excessive administrative costs be lost in exercising these dollars and not getting them on the ground. This is a challenge. There's not, there's no one to blame here. There's just not a finger pointing. It's really upon, I think it's incumbent upon us as a Commission to really think very strategically about this big picture, about how we're going to do this, because if we don't, other jurisdictions that do it better than us will, you know, be recognized for that, and those who don't do so well will be criticized for that. And I'm very concerned that government could be in the crosshairs if we don't spend these dollars correctly, and we're not strategic about these, because these are all public dollars, regardless where they come from. These are public dollars. So I think we actually have a lot more work to do and a lot more discussion about that because I don't want to see Clackamas County be in the media criticized for how we exercise any of these dollars. We have to be very, very cognizant and responsible about how we approach this. That is my, that's what's on my mind, keeping me up at night. Just wanted to share that, and that concludes my comments for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher, you're up next.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Smith, and thank you, Commissioner Savas, for making those comments. Those issues also keep me up at night, and it's incredibly challenging to look at how astronomical the need is and how we are going to rise to meet it. I do have tremendous confidence in our excellent staff, and I just have to commend our county Administrator Gary Schmidt for not only the rising to the challenge of these multiple emergencies, but also having the strategic vision to look down the road as to what's next. And that is a wonderful collaboration and partnership that we have within Clackamas County, which I think keeps us in a very good position to respond flexibly and to the need. The piece that was really disturbing for me today, which was disturbing back when we went back into extreme risk, is when we are not able to trace the cases back to a known source. And we could hear from Philip today that with 71% of the new cases that are rising, and we can't trace that, that really puts us at a disadvantage in knowing how to focus our efforts as far as restrictions. But we do know, and our message today, that we supported as the majority of this Commission is to get your shot. There was three things, Gary, what are they? Where's that letter? Get your shot. Was it keep your distance? Wear your mask. That's what this Commission is saying, and so we must do that. And in the meantime, I will let this Commission know that I've been engaged in conversations with different business leaders and others to figure out how we are going to be moving through, because it is not good public policy, in my mind, that as more people get vaccinated that we don't adjust the metrics. We have got to find a way that puts us through with utilizing, and I appreciate Chair Smith talking about, we've got to figure out how to use our best science and our best technology to move through this. The yo-yoing of opening and going back down and doing this, you know, it's not only hard. We talk a lot about our restaurants and our gyms and our businesses, which absolutely challenging, but it's hard for public health staff. It's hard for Clackamas County. It is hard for our workforce and for our operations to constantly be doing this. So we need a stable path forward, and let's continue using our best connections, all of us in our Commission, and use our best thinking and collaborate with our staff, because we do have a pretty powerful voice. When you look at the letter that AOC sent this week, that now I understand has the Restaurant Association that signed on to it, it's gaining momentum and traction, and we have got to be strong to fight for our community. That's what we are doing. We have to do better, so. But let's come with solutions, and I believe that we're committed to that, and I appreciate my colleagues in this effort.
Thank you for your fine comments, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Schrader, you're up next.
Thank you. Well, since we're on the subject of workforce, I want to remind everyone that we work very closely with Clackamas Workforce Partnership, which is our 501(c)(3) here in the county that actually looks at the various sectors that have jobs and tries to, and actually is very successful at essentially partnering workers with jobs that they want to have. And basically, through the private, public-private partnerships, they actually attract local funding to businesses, proactively addressing a key challenge to their success, which is a skilled, competent workforce. One particular example is that Clackamas Fire, given the fact we had wildfires, and Clackamas Community College have partnered together for a training opportunity to be a forestry technician repair specialist, earning $16 to $18.50 per hour while receiving wildfire... wildfire, wildland firefighter II, and wildland fire chainsaw certifications. You have to be 18 years old, have a driver's license, and currently unemployed or, unemployed or underemployed. I just want to remind folks that they actually get federal dollars that are channeled directly to their programs and their processes they pull together to make sure businesses get jobs, that people, businesses got the employees they need, but also that businesses get the support they need during the pandemic. And I do want to put in a plug for them, because as one of our 501(c)(3)'s, they are not one that this county has actually supported with any other dollars. We do support other nonprofits, particularly in the social service area. I would consider them as part of that continuum. So as we move forward with budget issues, and we really want to make sure that we have a trained workforce, and our businesses get the workforce that they deserve, that is something we might want to look at as we go through our budget. I think we've given them $50,000. That's about it. There are many other nonprofits that we've given significantly more dollars to. And as I said, they are in a fantastic position, a primary position, to leverage federal dollars from the Department of Labor and the Department of Justice in order to do job training and get people into jobs and support our businesses as we go through this tragedy of COVID and the seesawing that we are seeing back and forth. So to me, that's a pragmatic way to address the problem. A couple of other things I've been doing, I did go to the Veterans Advisory Committee meeting the other day. I did encourage folks, I know that we have asked them to do a work plan. I know that we have asked them to up their game. I specifically asked them to attempt to get in the know with General, with Camp Withacum and the generals and the folks who work there to help us more directly with our veterans' services. They are willing to serve. Actually, I mentioned to them that Withacum had no idea that we had had a veterans' village or that we had Clayton War Commons. And since they are in our area and they are a huge job and economic multiplier in our area, I strongly suggest, from their perspective, that we need to rebuild and relook at those relationships that we have. And I reminded them back in the day, we did fantastic work pulling our veterans into places like Clackamas Community Colleges to get them training, to get them access to jobs, and to make sure that they were connecting with our veterans' service offices to get the services they have earned as people who have served our country. Also, last week, Commissioner Scholl and I and Commissioner Savis had a trip to Estacada, where we actually looked at property for affordable workforce housing. As you know, we did not, we did not use the Turnkey Project there, but Estacada is ripe and very interested in looking at an affordable housing option for them as part of the continuum of what we do, all the way from transitional housing to permanent housing for people who need it and who need just a little bit extra help and able to afford a decent place to live. So I have asked Housing to look into that, our Housing folks, and I'm hopeful that with a partnership with Estacada, the mayor is on board, their city council is beginning to discuss this, that we can actually do a very fruitful partnership with them. On the arts side, I did have the opportunity to go to our Lakewood Board Retreat and in learning firsthand how our arts community is continuing to thrive despite COVID. We're doing a lot of virtual theater online. We're doing music online. We have, are working with all of our donors to make sure that as soon as the COVID crisis is over, we can move forward and be strong in the arts in this, in our community here in Clackamas County. And I will tell you that Clackamas Repertory Theater is still doing the same thing as well. So kudos to our arts community. We continue to support them, and I hope that we can continue to support our own Clackamas County Arts Alliance that also does a phenomenal job. Finally, I'm just going to encourage people, get vaccinated. Moderna, Pfizer, Johnson &amp; Johnson, wherever you can get a vaccine, get it as soon as possible. It will really help us move through this pandemic and this emergency. So that's what I have for the week, and thank you, Chair, and thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Scholl, you're up.
Yes. Good morning, and thank you to those of you who took time to come in or call in to testify On the Willamette Falls, this week, the tribal council members of the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ronde, community of Oregon, gave us a presentation of their Blue Heron Visioning Document for the Willamette Falls restoration. The project will be a benefit to the Confederated Tribes, all the people of Clackamas County, and people of the Northwest. Here's an example of history being preserved and restored and respected. Thank you, Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ronde. On the COVID lockdown, schools, families, and businesses are not buying this latest lockdown. They will no longer submit to it. They don't get permission to be locked down by anyone any longer. Forty states are fully opened with reasonable restrictions. We trust the people. We are free people. We must encourage safe behavior, vaccinations, diligence, and concern in places of business. We are not asking. We are telling. Listen to the people. Listen to business. We asked nicely two weeks ago. Our plea was disregarded. Now, I'd like to take a moment and share a perspective on COVID, a mathematical perspective. We have, last Thursday, we had 243 cases per 100,000. Today, as reported, we're up to 244.7. So with 243 COVID cases per 100,000 people in Clackamas, we have 430,000 people. That's 4.3 times 243. That's 1,045 cases in the county. Of them, 12% show symptoms. That is 125 Clackamas residents show COVID symptoms. Most of them have mild symptoms and are not seriously ill. That leaves approximately 429,000 Clackamas County residents who are healthy, who need an economy to support themselves. Get a vaccination if you want. It is not forced. Be vigilant. Protect the aged and the infirmed. Everyone else must get out, live your life, run your business, fall in love, play with your kids, work on your dreams. There's 328 COVID-19 people in the hospital statewide. We pray for them all. On schools, we have lost 240 children in the past year to COVID in the United States. It is heartbreaking. Yet, in a typical year, we lose more children than that number to influenza, which is more dangerous to the youth than is COVID. Every life is precious, but the educational life of our children is also critically important. Open our schools now to full operation. We cannot allow our Clackamas kids to be denied their education. Parents, PTAs, please speak up. On religious freedom, the people of Clackamas County have a right to worship God in the way they choose. Our places of worship have been shut down too long. Our mosques, churches, and synagogues must open for the spiritual health of our people. I ask religious leaders to contact me and my fellow commissioners and let us know how we can work to help support you, your church, your mosque, and your synagogue. On homelessness, Monday, I visited homeless encampments in the county and right on the border between Clackamas County and Multnomah County. I asked people what events occurred in their lives that brought them to homelessness, and what events do they need to occur to restore their lives to productivity, health, and achieving their dreams? I learned a lot. We have a growing problem that is complex. We cannot make the same mistakes as Seattle, Portland, San Francisco, Multnomah County, King County, and Marin Counties. The passage of Measure 110 is making the problem more difficult. Clackamas County is working on the problem. They're doing a good job, but we must focus even more attention on this problem. And I ask residents of the county to contact me and my fellow commissioners on your observations and ideas for action, so we can better understand the situation. Keep mental health and drug addiction support in your ideas, please. I will receive my second Moderna shot on Saturday at the Sandy High School Vaccination Site. And also on the comment made earlier regarding my site visit to homeless encampments on Monday, the photographs that were posted on public media were not posted by myself. I have no control over who posts those photographs. And in talking to the homeless people, I explained to them that the photographs we took that day would be used to help promote awareness of the situation, and they are all in agreement with the use of those photographs. Finally, on the Veterans Village, thank you to Marine Veteran Corporal Shawn for the tour this last week. It's an effective and welcoming facility for veterans needing supportive housing as they move on to achieving their goals and dreams. If you know somebody who's a veteran who needs such assistance, have them contact the Veterans Village today. There's space available. One last thing, the thought for the week. Freedom is one of the few worthy goals in life. Courage is the only virtue that can attain it and keep it. Thank you very much, Clackamas County.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholl. In keeping with my promises during the ice storm this afternoon, I will be meeting with Maria Pope, the CEO of PGE. I'm very excited about the opportunity to work with her and her team on, as they are our electricity provider. We have talked about our shared goals as we move forward. We have identified some areas. I'm thankful for PGE for giving our nonprofits $75,000, so they could then funnel that money into the people in Clackamas County who were severely affected by our ice storms. They are moving ahead with some efforts on hardening the infrastructure, and I had a lot of conversations during and after that. I have seen pole replacement in many areas in South Clackamas County. I've also seen some very aggressive limit management from our trees that I'm very happy about. We'll be talking about a lot of topics this afternoon. Yesterday, I taped a PSA regarding the wildfire season. They're saying it could come sooner and be more severe than last year, and I'm really hoping that's not so. The PSA will come out in a couple of weeks. And on that PSA, there's an app we can sign up for, for emergency alerts, and it's www.clackamas.us/dm. D is in dog, M, disaster management. And it, you can download an app on your iPhone or have email sent or a phone call to your landline, and it's quite a nifty little tool. Recently, I did a PSA regarding COVID, and in that PSA, if you can go online and it's out there, I recommend that people get their shots, just in case these misinformed people who continue to spread lies, don't understand our position on that. With that in mind, I see no further business before this Board of County Commissioners, and we are adjourned.